Well, good evening. It is Thursday, August 26, 2021. The time is 6:30 PM, and I am going to call to order this regularly scheduled board meeting of the Independent School District 191 School Board. Welcome to those that are able to make it this evening and attending in person, and a big welcome to anybody watching at home now or maybe in the future. Director Chester, will you please lead us in the Fudge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will begin tonight's meeting with an approval of the agenda. If I may have a motion for that, please.
Still moved.
Moved by Director Chester.
Second.
Second by Director Webb. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any not in favor? Hearing none, the motion passes. We will now move to the information portion of tonight's meeting, beginning with and to receive an update on summer programming, provided by Jason Sellers, our Director of Community Ed. I should mention our new Director of Community Ed. Congratulations on your recent role change, my friend, and welcome.
All right. Chair Miller, members of the board, Dr. Battle, thank you for the opportunity to be here and share what I am very excited to present to you tonight. This was the most robust summer programming that we've had, and I think that in looking at the presentation, you can probably see that. I would be remiss if I didn't start off at the top by thanking all of the staff, students, and families that took part in summer programming after a long, long year. There are a lot of staff that came in and decided to also work in summer, so my heartfelt thank you to all of them. In terms of summer programming, the first slide kind of talks about some of the pieces that were involved. In terms of goals, we had four clear goals. These goals stemmed from feedback from students, from families, and from staff. First, we want to provide hands-on, standards-aligned, project-based learning. What that really means to us is engage students where they're at with hands-on experiential learning in the form of activities that are outside of the classroom, activities that are non-traditional to allow them to learn in different ways. Second goal was to integrate explicit phonics instruction in kindergarten, first grade. This stemmed from a partnership with our CISA department and Amina Othidall and her team, where they approached us and offered to help us support integrating Being a Reader explicit phonics instruction in summer. Harder than you may think, but we were able to do that thanks to that partnership with CISA. The third goal was to provide additional instruction for English learners, special education students, and students requiring acceleration in both math and literacy. We had a lot of students from a lot of families who really wanted to be in person, and they really wanted to accelerate that learning. The fourth goal was to include not only academic programming, which of course is the main focus for much of our programming in the summer, particularly our Area Learning Center programming, but also enrichment and credit recovery. This particular slide outlines the different buildings and the different programs in those buildings with the different grade levels. In parentheses behind each building, you will find the total amount of students that were served. Those numbers that you see are registered students. So, for example, at Vista View Elementary, we opened up that school for the first time in summer programming. We did that for a wide variety of reasons, not the least of which is we had expanded interest, we had to socially distance, and we wanted to integrate new programming, specifically pre-K. So, our pre-K students who had never attended school before got to ride the buses with the kindergarteners and the first graders, and many of the kindergarteners that were there for the first time were experiencing in-person school for the first time. As I mentioned to Board Chair Miller, on the ground in summer when the governor visited, there were a large number of students that were in virtual the entire year. This was their first in-person learning experience. The numbers are there for each of the different sites. We range from pre-K program, well, early childhood programming, all the way to adult programming in our school for adults, our Adult Basic Education Program. Specifically, formatting isn't showing up as it normally would, but specifically, we offered adult education programming and pre-K programming for really the first time in this expanded format. Some of that was due to how we developed and built the program. Some of that was due to funds provided from the state legislature. In addition to the programs that you see here, the total sum of students that were served is approximately 3,544. And so, that's pre-K all the way through adults. By the way, I should mention that in each of the slides, you see your students, our students, in action. These are from field trips that students took across different locations throughout the summer. Almost all of them were outside with, except for the Crayola Experience. In terms of newly integrated programming, we were able to provide increased and enhanced instructional support for special education and English learners pre-kindergarten. We implemented the Being a Reader curriculum, as I mentioned earlier, and we had a great deal of partnerships across the programs. Specifically, I've listed many of the community partnerships. Key in these partnerships that we've used, that we have partnered with over many summers include the University of Minnesota, For Each Extension Learning Programs, the YMCA, but we all, National Wildlife Refuge. But we also had other partners that integrated in programming, including we had police and fire, we had the Open Door, we had Blaze Camps, the Burnsville Athletic Club, and more. This is a pretty, this is not a complete list, but this is a pretty substantive list from the partners that we had this summer. And we thank all of our partners for working with us to provide these programs. In terms of learner outcomes, each student in summer programming that is provided by the Area Learning Center, so that's primarily kindergarten through seventh grade, are required by statute to have a continual learning plan. Those continual learning plans measure their growth. In the curriculum, we actually implement on the ground with them in the forms of a pre-assessment and a post-assessment, specifically as it relates to three areas in literacy, math, and social-emotional. Those continual learning plans are then shared with parents along with an explanation so that they have feedback on how their children actually perform in the programs with the curriculum instruction that we provided in summer program. In terms of Being a Reader, we were also able to include those measurements for parents as well. In 912 Credit Recovery, we know that last year during COVID, we had some students who fell a little bit behind in terms of their credit attainment. We had 361 credits that were earned this summer in the two summer school sessions. There are still more credits to be earned. There are, there's a cadre of students who have started their credit recovery class and are at varying different percentage completion rates at this point. So, for example, we have some students that are about 80% of the way through. We have halted that in the system. They will pick it up when they come back in the fall and continue and finish. So, to this 361 credit total, will be added more credits as we move on. In terms of the eighth grade STEM program, which some of you are very familiar with with your own children, we had 35 credits that were earned. And then, in each of the grades K through seven, based upon the assessments that were given, we experienced double-digit growth by percentages on average in each of the grade levels in math, literacy, and social-emotional. We had a lot of people coming to see us, had a lot of people talking to us. I know that I had communication with seven other districts around what we were doing, how we were doing it, and I can tell you that they were not providing the robust programming that we were providing. They were trying to learn how to do that. Fortunately, we had a really good base. We were able to expand off that base. The Star Tribune, of course, the governor, Minneapolis Public Radio, Sun this week, and other school districts really highlight some of those accomplishments. And they took really great photos. What you see at the top, it was really hot that day. That Tiger mascot gets really hot. I can tell you that personally. But we partnered with, we partnered with Alina Health and a former Burnsville graduate connected with us and said, "We have these bikes. We want to give them to students and families who are in need. Can you help us?" Previously, Amina Othidall and her team had implemented this program. We took it over this year because it makes sense for Community Ed to do that. We invited fire and police from Savage, and we were able to give 47 bikes, helmets, and locks to students that we specifically connected with on the ground in our summer programs who didn't have bikes. So, that was a great highlight. Here is a very small sampling of student feedback. These are exact quotes I took from the student surveys that we gave. One of the students that I really, really, really liked, "I got to see my friends and make more friends." It was really heartwarming to be on the ground when you see two little kindergarteners getting off the bus holding hands as they're walking into school because they hadn't seen each other in so long, or new friends getting off the bus and being able to make those connections. We focus a lot on experiential learning through science and themes that we have by grade level, as you know, and there are a lot of students that really enjoy this work because it's outside, it's engaging, and there are experiments that they conduct. And so, a lot of our students want to be scientists, which is really great. In terms of parent feedback, these are exact quotes taken from parents. One thing I would really like to highlight is the quote from, second from the bottom. "My child's summer teacher was amazing. She was so kind and patient and so willing to listen and help my child with his special needs." And there's a picture of a special ed support staff in this slide. That picture was taken by somebody on the ground. And there are students who just like to be back with their teachers and get that one-on-one personalized support. Hopefully, we provided as much of that as possible. In terms of staff, we have a lot of internal 191 staff that work for us, but we also hire externally. I was at the new teacher orientation the other day, and I can tell you about 19 of our new teachers worked for us in the summer or in after-school, and now are working for us this school year. So, it's a great feeder program. One of the things we take our pride on is that we really try to treat teachers and staff like professionals. And so, we, it's a full day, but we give them that, that time for collaborative learning as a grade-level team to be able to look at student work and be able to assess that individualized instruction on the ground. In terms of student supports and personalized learning, we added additional English learner staff. I hired as many EL teachers, English learner teachers, as we could find, as many special education staff as we could find. We had intervention staff. We also applied and received AmeriCorps funding, and so, we had a number of AmeriCorps personnel on the ground. Headway, of course, continued to provide service, and we had speech and language on the ground. So, from a student support perspective, we partnered with Stephanie White and her special education staff to provide the most integrated, inclusive, and robust support we possibly could. In terms of planning for Summer 22, you know, our team gets together and re-review this data from student feedback, parent feedback, and staff feedback. We look at areas we can get better. We also, throughout the course of the year, try to engage and expand our partnerships. We have to, on the ground, make sure that we ensure proper reporting to MDE so that we can get reimbursed for all these great things that we feel like we did. And then, finally, we look for new ways to develop programming and expand to support more students and families than we currently are, which will be a challenge next summer, but our team is ready to do that. I just have to take a second to say, there were a lot of people that gave a lot of time this summer, and yes, they were getting paid, but it was a lot of work, and it was really well done. And so, I really want to thank the students and parents, but I also want to thank the entire summer school staff. It was an amazing effort, and we couldn't have done it without them. Departments, including technology, food service, buildings and grounds, CISA, special education, and especially Rachel Gordon and her team for technology were invaluable. Dr. Battle and the leadership team were always available. If I had questions, if the team had questions, to be able to support us, to allow us to make some decisions in real time, even though the funding did come late for some of these things. And my core ALC team, in particular, our site leads, all came together to make this happen, and so, I just want to say thank you to those teams.
Well, excellent. Thank you, Director Sellers. That. Board members, any questions or comments?
Thank you for having such a wonderful summer enrichment program for our kids. I know I really appreciated the integration of summer enrichment into the Project Kids for Summer. It was nice having it all at the same time and all at once and having it so that if you wanted the enrichment, you didn't feel like your child had to be pulled somewhere else to do it, that it was all done on-site. I thought that was a very valuable offering this year.
Thank you.
And my daughter had a blast.
Other comments?
I, my kids were not in it, but from everything I've heard, it's been fantastic. So, I second what Director Chester said. My one question, I guess, I'm curious, and you may not know this, which is fine, but I thought of it while you were talking. So, you said there are over 3,300 students in the programming, and that included pre-K and adult learners. Do we have a sense, do we track at all, of the school-age kids, what percentage of them go to school in 191 during the school year? Or are some of them open and enrolled, but they do participate in our summer programming, or do we have any way of knowing that?
Yeah. So, to my knowledge, in the Area Learning Center programming, K through 12, we had, to my knowledge, we had two students that were, that lived within our district but didn't attend their schools that were in the program.
So, most, the vast, 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 vast majority are 191 students?
Yep.
That's incredible. That's a very high percentage of our enrollment. Thank you.
Do we foresee being able to continue this for years to come? I mean, this is just amazing when you look at, you know, how you were able to coordinate all this. And I'm very impressed by all of it. And, you know, unfortunately, my kids, they didn't get to participate. I wish they could have, but, you know, I, I was not working, so it didn't make sense for me to send them. But I, I would like for them to have the opportunity, hopefully, next summer. So, I'm just wondering if this is going to be, you know, continued.
First, I love the mask.
Thank you.
Second, second, for the Area Learning Center programming, students who qualify, it's free. And then, at the end of it, we report, and then we get reimbursed. So, for K-12 programming, right, that is sustainable moving forward, including many of the elements that were there. Of course, with the additional funding, it made certain things easier. Typically, we wouldn't send students on the Crayola Experience. That is a very expensive per-student cost to send students, but with the governor funding, we were able to do that. We try to hire as much additional support staff in the K-12 programming as possible in terms to support EL learners, special ed learners, and students who need a little bit of extra help or intervention time. We try to do that. And much of that is sustainable. I have to, I have to say two things. So, first, yes, I do think much of it is sustainable. But secondly, I have to credit Dr. Battle and Lisa Ryder and the executive team because, you know, they were well aware of some of the things that we were trying to plan. They asked some of those same questions, and we try to build it in so that we can sustain it moving forward. I'll give you a very specific example. In our adult education program, we have, we work in arrears for funding much the way that Area Learning Center programs do. So, you put a program on, you assume or hope that a certain amount of students are going to show up. When they do, they create a certain amount of contact hours, and then you get reimbursed based upon that. So, you're kind of guessing a little bit, right? And so, we had additional funds in adult education. We were able to provide summer school funding. Those additional hours, next year, when we get them back, will add to our budget, which means it should be sustainable moving forward. We try to use that very same model in all of our summer programs. Another really great example is the pre-K experience. So, just today, I was working with Lisa Ryder and Tyler Deeney on, okay, so what's the plan for next summer? We had fantastic feedback from parents who had four-year-olds in the pre-K program for all 24 days that were at Vista View with the kindergarteners and the first graders. So, our challenge as a team is to work with Dr. Battle and her team to figure out, yes, we think it's sustainable. How can we give that same experience to new four-year-olds next summer? We think we'll be able to do that. And in part, it's because of how it is created from a structural perspective in terms of model. In part, it's because of, we have really great leadership that allows us the flexibility to try things and figure out if they work. And in part, we have some one-time funds now that we can put into place to begin to generate some of those funds down the road to make it sustainable. I hope that answers that question.
Yes, thank you.
Additional questions? Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, this is great. I love, I love hearing all about summer programming. Just a couple of questions. One of them, I understand if you don't have the numbers tonight, just a curiosity question. Knowing that we had over the 3,300 students this summer and knowing last summer is just not going to be comparable, do we know what our growth was since 2019?
Yeah. And so, what I, you know, what I shared with, I believe, both NPR and the Star Tribune is somewhere between 20 and 30%. I'll give you a specific example that I know I've shared out. You know, two summers ago, when we were in person, we had, I think it was six kindergarten sections. This summer, we had nine. Had we had the ability to go to yet another building, right, because of timing, because of funds, all that sort of stuff? Because it takes a lot to get the registration enrollment and get it off the ground, hire the teachers. Had we had the time and the ability to do that, we could have probably added two more kindergarten sections, two more first-grade sections, another third-grade section, another fourth-grade section. But at a certain point, you have to say, here's what we can actually staff and manage. And so, I don't like waiting. I want every kid to get in, but at the end of the day, about 20 to 30% more than what we had two summers ago in person overall. And that's specifically the Area Learning Seven, Area Learning Center K-7 program I'm talking about.
That's great. Thank you. And then, the other question, I'm not sure if this would go to you or Dr. Battle. You had mentioned, you know, summer programming be kind of a, being a great feeder program for the district as a whole. Recognizing that there are shortages in certain areas, do we know yet if maybe some of those shorted, short areas were helped by this feeder program in the summer programming? And if you don't have the answer tonight, I completely get it.
Don't have the exact answer tonight, Director Off, but we'll get that information. It certainly always helps that we had 19 who we were able to hire, who first came to us from summer session. So, yes, we'll get that information.
Awesome. Thank you. That's all.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, I'll just close by saying again, thank you, Director Sellers. Excellent presentation, and thank you to everyone and your staff for the hard-working summer. The evidence, the district doesn't just shut its doors and go home for the summer for sure not. So, thank you. All right. The next item on our information component of our meeting tonight is to receive an update about District 191's efforts to implement COVID-19-related educational and public health guidance issued by the MDE and the MDH, respectively speaking will be Dr. Battle, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Miller and Directors of the Board. So, our District 2021 Safe Return to In-Person Learning Plan outlines District 191's approach to providing instruction for all students while continuing to address the ongoing effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. This plan will address our learning models we will offer this fall, health and safety measures that will be implemented, and additional measures we plan to take to address students' academic, socio-emotional, and mental health needs. As you recall, the draft plan was presented and shared with the public in June, and we did accept some input and feedback on the plan. We will update and share the final plan shortly. So, just a reminder to everyone, we will provide full in-person learning for students at all grade levels while implementing health and safety mitigation efforts. We will also launch and have our 191 Virtual Academy, a fully virtual learning option for students in grades K-12. We will continue to monitor health conditions in the community and review the guidance from the Centers for Disease Control and our local agencies, Minnesota Department of Health, as well as other state and local health officials. Please know the plan may change based on many factors. COVID-19 is still present, and we must remain vigilant in adhering to our mitigation protocols. I'm excited about the opening of school. Yes, there is a smile behind the mask. I am so excited about the opening of our school, and we want to make it as safe as possible. The COVID-19 leadership team is still finalizing procedures, and we are still consulting with our Dakota County and Scott County Public Health Departments. Our COVID-19 advisory team has started to meet again, and our regional support staff, we have one person assigned to us. Tonight's report will include information from Bernie Bean, being our Lead Licensed School Nurse, who will be sharing health and safety updates, and Brian Gersich, Assistant Superintendent, will provide information regarding our 191 Fall Safe Learning Plan and activities and athletics. And so, I welcome Bernie to share her portion of the report.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Good evening, Chair Miller and Board of Directors. Before I give you some of the data, I'm just going to talk a little bit about a different way that metrics are being calculated for the state level. So, last year, the level of transmission was monitored on a positivity level for the state and also a 14-day case rate per 10,000 individuals. We're continuing with the positivity rate, but MDH has switched the second metric to reflect what the CDC has recommended. So, it's a seven-day case rate per 100,000, a population of 100,000. So, the numbers are not comparable to last year, but it does provide some continuity with all the states in the United States based on what CDC has recommended. So, with that level of transmission, they do rank it now as either low, moderate, substantial, or high. High would be a number, a seven-day number of cases that is over 100. Currently, Minnesota is ranked as high with a number of 176.4. Dakota County is at 132, and Scott County is at 130. So, both counties are in the high rate, high level of transmission. The positivity rate for Minnesota for the week of August 8th through August 14th was 5.3. That same timeframe for Dakota County, we have 5.4 as a positivity rate, which is up from 4.6. Scott County is at 6.5, which is up from 4.8. And they anticipate that those numbers will continue to raise, rise, rise. Specifically for Dakota County, the seven-day rolling case count, so that's the number, average number- Specifically for Dakota County, the seven-day rolling case count, so that's the number, average number of positive cases just for Dakota County, is at 88. Two weeks ago, that number was 61. Within that 88, in those positive cases, 47% of the new cases are in individuals from the ages of 30 to 59. 15% of the new cases in Dakota County are in individuals under 12 years of age. In comparison, that is a low percentage. However, throughout the pandemic, that number typically has been in the 9% range. So we are seeing an increase in the children under 12 that are contracting COVID. Internally, for 191, over the last two weeks, we have completed nine case investigations for positive individuals within our building during their infectious period. I will echo what Dr. Battle said, that this serves as a perp, as a reminder that we need to continue to be vigilant with our mitigation strategies. So on to some really exciting conversations. Saliva screening. Last week, MDA, MDE released the availability of screening and testing supplies for, for districts. Our current district is still in the planning stages. However, our vision would include a screening and a testing component. Last year, we had a screening program, which was an optional bi-weekly program for staff who would come to the spit room and we would collect their specimens and then turn them into the vault company. We're going to continue, we hope to continue with that program. However, they have opened that up where it can be a take-home optional screening for staff to complete it at home on a Zoom conference with the vault company that, that does the testing. So we're looking at that for our staff. As far as the testing program, we have been having discussions with a community partner, and the vision would be to provide a drive-through testing opportunity for our families when their child is sick and is being picked up from school. So more to come on that. As far as vaccinations, during the month of August, Minnesota launched that Vax-to-School campaign, and that's been good. It's shown an uptick in some of the coverages in our counties and in the state as, as a whole. Vaccination rates in Scott County and Dakota County for individuals 12 and older who have had at least one dose of the vaccine is 74.3% to 77.5%. For those individuals 16 and older with at least one dose, it's 76 to 78%. And that is my information.
All right. Good evening, Chair Miller, Board of Directors, and Superintendent Battle. I'm just going to say a few things related to our athletics and activities, and then just maybe a brief comment about some of our planning for fall, just to reiterate some of the things that Dr. Battle mentioned a moment ago. As it relates to athletics and activities, we did receive some guidance from the Minnesota State High School League in particular that we had been waiting for. That did come a little bit late, prior to the last board meeting. It was actually that day, so we didn't get a chance as a team to really digest that until the next day. So some of this is information that the public may have seen because we have started practices. But this is just to kind of give you an idea of what we're looking for, for our process, for our athletics and activities this year, which is to follow the same general team guidance, digestion, and decision-making group as we had last year. We will meet on Thursdays with that group. That involves our athletic director, activities directors, building administration. Stephanie White is our Director of Student Support Services, as well as between Bernie Bean or Courtney Boleo, who are the nurses, both for the high school and obviously for the district, to be a part of that process as well. What we will do is take a continued deliberate approach, activity by activity, season by season, based on the health guidance that changes or just our local decision-making that, again, I think counting until last year did, was unique. But as we start this year, I'm just going to give you a little of an idea of where we're at with our sports and activities. And again, that's where we are right now. And that could change week by week, month by month, activity by activity. This is where we are at this very moment. For outdoor sports and activities, similar to kids at recess as of right now, masking is not required for those students and participants who can maintain, you know, proper social distancing. It's not required for athletes who are participating in the sport itself during the activity while they're outdoors. One of the things that we are working on right now for our larger sporting events, so for example, for football, is to have a designated for our spectators, because again, it's an outdoor event, masking is not required. But we want to have a section that is mask mandatory if you want to sit in that section. What it will do is allow people an opportunity, if they themselves choose to mask and decide they would prefer to be around others who are also masking, an opportunity to come to one of our events, put on that mask and sit in that section. And as we've said, you're not required right now to wear a mask at our events, but you would be required if you're going to sit in that particular section for the, again, that option and that opportunity, which also is the fact that many of our events are also streamed, another opportunity to view it. But we'd like to see if people would feel more comfortable to come out if that was in place. As it relates to our indoor sports and activities, our indoor mask mandate does apply. And right now, the only exception would be those athletes who are actively engaged in the competition or in the activity at that moment. And so while the volleyball player is on the court in the game, they would not be required to wear the mask. If they are seated on the bench, they would, again, following our indoor mask mandate, all of our spectators for indoors would be required to wear masks. There are other parameters in place. Just to note that we've taken a deliberate approach. They need to take attendance to make sure if there's contact tracing. There's limited use of locker rooms on a must-needed basis only. For example, swim does require showering and things. So there is going to be some use of locker rooms, but we're going to try to limit those. And certainly, things like sharing of water bottles are not allowed, just as we continue to take some of those other, you know, standard precautions and mitigations. Right now, the only activity that is in place is marching band, which is outdoors, so following the guidance for outdoor activities. But we are continuing to discuss what is this going to look like when we start those additional activities in the weeks ahead, which usually start shortly after the start of school for some of our activities. And then as Dr. Battle had mentioned, you know, there are some adjustments that will be coming to our fall back-to-school plan that was presented and displayed in June. I will say that there are not a lot of substantial changes. A lot of what we've been doing have been following that plan. We follow the same process as we did last year, which is to have that multi-department team that comes together on a regular basis. That was the team that was doing the pre-flight, in-flight planning process. We continue that collaboration going into this fall. We've met a couple of times this summer. We'll be meeting, I'm sorry, we will be determining next week if there's a continued need to meet again before we plan for fall. But we're feeling really good about the continued collaboration, discussion, and partnerships that happen as we prepare for the return of our students. And that concludes my section.
That concludes our report for tonight.
Okay. Board members, any questions or comments for any of our speakers?
I was just curious about the sport that usually happens right after football and which is wrestling. That one, so it's, that's a specific sport. Since it's so close contact, do you think you would have that at this time?
It's a really good question, and what I wouldn't do is hedge us on either side of that. One of the things we talked about, because today is Thursday, we had our meeting this afternoon, and we started to project out for what might this happen in, in winter. And winter's a long time away in the world of COVID. So we will continue to discuss it, but we wouldn't be making any decisions until we see what happens with rates. We would expect the High School League would potentially put out some guidance as to what other mitigations could be there. So I think it's a great question, but we've really felt like we have to just sit back, get our fall sports started. And even those could change week by week in the current seasons that we're in.
Other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Just a clarifying question, Brian. You had mentioned that attendance would be taken. I'm assuming you're talking attendance for indoor events for both students and audience or just students?
No, that's a good question. My, when I said that, that was for our coaches and participants, so that we knew which participants were at the events. I think it's a good question. I don't know that we have discussed at this point, those spectators check in things or what that looks like. So I would have to look into that and find out if there is a plan for that. So thank you for that question.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
Yep. I have a couple of questions. I assume the answer to this is yes, but you know what they say about assuming. If an organi, if an outside organization, say, rents our gym, they are still required to, everybody, because they're in our building, they're required to follow the mask requirements.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So when we had that activities and athletics meeting, I forgot to say that also at that meeting, our, their community ed, as well as Kyle, who's our, in charge of our facilities rentals, and what we try to do is follow the same rules. And so if our sports and activities require masking for all but the immediate participants, then anybody using our facilities needs to follow those same expectations.
Whether it's a school activity or not, because it's on school.
Correct.
Good.
We're trying to keep it as consistent as possible so that we're all, you know, again, across all of our areas, this is our expectation as a district for our facilities and activities.
Sure. Thank you. And then my other unrelated question, well, it's related to COVID, but some areas of the country have already had situations once school has started where they've had to close down entire classes, entire grades, in some cases, entire schools due to outbreaks. I believe that our masking requirement will significantly help that, but I'm curious to know a little bit more about the decision-making process if we do have an outbreak and have to potentially close temporarily, hopefully, a classroom or a grade or some such.
I'm going to bring in the one who's much smarter than I.
I thought you might.
We'll, we'll continue the same process. We'll utilize our local public health, our, the MDH staff and our local regional support team to kind of talk that through and make the best plan for that situation. It's not always a one-size-fits-all. Every situation has some uniqueness to it. And so when we do our case investigations, we really look at the big picture, and then we share that information with people that help us make the right decisions for that situation. So to have a specific guideline, if we have this many cases, would we do this? It's really, all depends on what the situation is.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Bernie, will you add a little bit about the former decision tree that gave guidance, that Minnesota Department of Health?
Sure. So we've always used the decision tree, which is when people have symptoms, and it also talks about what to do when you are close contact in a household or as a casual close contact. They had talked about revising that, but with the Delta, they feel that it's more prudent to keep it the way it is because there's still COVID in the area. So that would be a tool that we would use to guide the decisions that are made in the health office.
Thank you.
Paul, please.
Just kind of, you made me think of something. Going back to last year, you know, obviously, if a, if a student was believed to have been exposed, they would go, they would stay home quarantined and, you know, possibly attend a virtual class. Knowing that we have the Virtual Academy this year, is that an option or do students, because Virtual Academy is its own school, and then the in-person students will simply go home, quarantine, and have to make up the school time?
The, the hope with the exception to quarantining for close contacts in a school setting, MDH CDC has given the guidance that if the wearer and the positive, the, the close contact and the positive person are both wearing a mask, and they're within that three to six feet, they would not need to quarantine, but they still are a close contact, and they would be informed of that. It's an exception, no different than if somebody's vaccinated and they are identified as a close contact. They would not need to quarantine, but they still would need to be mindful of symptoms and seek advice if that happens. So we are hopeful that the amount of students quarantined will be much less than last year.
And the masks will help with that, obviously, because we will be working to socially distance where we can, and the masks, of course, will be there.
Correct, correct.
And just to the, to the question about like a quarantined student and the crossover of Virtual Academy, it, it wouldn't be a fit there. What we'd be doing is the Virtual Academy is its own school. And so because they're going to have their own class size limits and their own things going on, it would be potentially disruptive to move a student in and out of that environment. And so what we'd be doing again is looking at some, you know, first of all, using some of our technologies and that assignments are posted in Seesaw and Synergy, and then depending on the length of and number of students in quarantine, taking a look at what those other educational identified opportunities look like for those individuals through their teacher or substitute teachers or other instructors as a part of that, but not as a part of the Virtual Academy overlap.
But can I, but in most cases, I think I heard you say, if they are vaccinated, they will not need to quarantine, as long as they're not showing symptoms.
Correct.
Yes, thank you.
More importantly, as we talked about last meeting, if they're both, this is one of the major reasons why we went ahead with the mask mandate, is if the both parties are masked, they also will not need to quarantine, which, as Bernie alluded to, we hope will severely cut back on the amount of quarantined children that are not showing symptoms or, you know, sick of any kind. Any other? Well, I have a couple of things. So just for clarification, Dr. Battle, so we did pass a mandate and, and as it was alluded to, there, you know, have already risen in the country scenarios where situations have had to shut down and my interpret, so correct me if I'm wrong. My interpretation is in the immediacy, that determination would be made by you ultimately, with consultation and advice from your staff, obviously, determining whether you're shutting a class down or a grade or a school or whatever it is. But I believe it's the understanding that any kind of long-term action or a change of learning plan, then we would come back before the board, right? That's, okay, very good. Just so everybody's clear on that. Brian, I had a couple of things. So the, the High School League, their settings for sports and activities is recommendations, correct?
It's correct. Yep.
So when we host teams or other organizations coming in to compete or interact with our folks, they may or may not be interested in complying with the, the recommendations, but we're, we would be, we're, it's home ground here. We can set the ground rules, I assume, right?
That's absolutely correct. And within the guidance of the Minnesota State High School League, when they actually broke it out sport by sport, the majority of them, and curious that I didn't see it at all, but the majority of them do say, you follow the rules of the host site. And so I know in Guillaume, already talking with our opponent for some, from some contests for next week, we're asking about some of our rules, for example, related to our locker room and what was okay and not using. So there is an understanding when we're the host, these are the rules of the, of the.
Yeah, I would encourage plenty of upfront communication. It sounds like you're doing that. Not personally being involved in high school sports, but youth sports, I saw widely ranging interpretation of, and they were supposed to be actually wearing masks, so it wasn't very hard to confuse what was supposed to be happening. And the referees had no interest in enforcing any kind of action. So, you know, I hope we don't get to those scenarios, but I think if you're upfront very clearly, and then the adults in charge are the ones that are responsible, it becomes clear. And then just some very tactical things. So, you know, the fall sports is very kind of clear outline, but what about like band concerts, choral concerts, theater? Now, if I want to go see the fall show, are they going to presenting without, acting without their masks on? Because they are the participants, right? No difference with the basketball team out on the court, right? But the, but I sitting in the audience will wear my mask for the entirety of the show. Does that?
As, as of right this, if we were creating the rules as of right this minute, that's probably where we'd end up. We just haven't done it because it's almost like we're, they haven't started yet, and we're going to continue to take the time that we need to figure out what's happening with COVID, what are the, what are the recent cases? But I would agree that if we were making the rules today, the expectation would probably be the spectators are all wearing masks, and our performers would be able to unmask because they are in the midst of the event, depending of, I mean, we're still going to say, can we do other mitigations? Can we, if it's called blocking, I believe, on the stage, can they block a little bit different or further apart than they might typically for a particular scene? What other additional mitigations can we take so that we can offer everything possible, kind of one of our taglines, if you will? We want to do everything we can. We just want to do it as safe as we can and layer in the mitigations wherever we can.
I just wanted to note, Principal Help, correct me if I'm mistaken, but the spring play, the actors, actresses all wore masks.
They did, yes.
And they didn't miss a beat. You heard everything clearly.
Right. I think we'd all rather they weren't wearing masks.
Father wanted, they would definitely recommend.
As the performers, yes. Yeah, I'll just close. First of all, thank you all for, and especially you, Bernie, for all the work you guys are doing and your staff. But I just want to, again, tread over the ground we went over last time. want to, again, tread over the ground we went over last time. The reason this board moved forward with a mask mandate was to mitigate, to enable us to continue to provide the benefits of what the school district provides, whether it's in-class instruction, sports, theater, whatever it is. That's the end goal, that's, that's the reason we're trying to do this, to keep as many kiddos doing the activities as they have options to do. We're not, you know, I encourage to continue, and I heard it tonight, but I encourage the continued practical application of mask wearing. Not, it's not a letter of the law thing per se, it's, it's a, what makes intelligent choices to, to make sure that we don't turn into a super-spreader event, and that we don't take away the advantage of being able to experience what the school district has to offer. So, you know, let's be practical about our decision-making in respect to that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Then, the next in our information section will be committee, board member committee appointments and school assignment reports. I will just open it up, actually, let me run through it. Let's start with the Legislative Committee.
Great. So, the Legislative Committee met on August the 10th, and we had Representative Angie Craig join us for our meeting, in which we highlighted our district's legislative priorities, and had a wonderful conversation with her on what she could be able to advocate with us in DC, and that she's a, a big supporter of ours, so that was appreciated. And then we also touched base on our plan to have a new meeting with the legislators that were introducing the bill this last year, so that we have that meet, some meetings getting scheduled to, to begin those conversations early this fall. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Policy Committee.
Thank you. So, the Policy Committee met at Diamond Head on Monday, August 16th. We have policies coming forward for a first reading that will appear in the September 9th agenda. And there are a couple of policies that staff is working on that will come back to the, to the committee the next, next month. And the committee meets next on Monday, September 20th, at 5:30 PM in the Egan Room here in Diamond Head.
Thank you. And again, can you just leave that on? Negotiations?
All right, negotiations. The negotiations team itself has not officially met, but we do have our team working. We've, they've already begun with negotiations with the principals group and operations supervisors, and there is a TA with the Food and Nutritional Services Group, so we're making progress.
Excellent, thank you. I believe that is all the standing committee reports. Director Wurbe, I believe you have a, a recently created assignment you have a report on tonight?
Yes. So, the Health Insurance Committee, or the Health Insurance Meeting, was held on Monday, August 16th at 9:00 AM. In attendance was myself, Stacy Solvine, Jay Sambroja with One Digital, Al Holcosta with One Digital, and Haley Busker with 191, IC 191. We discussed various aspects of the district's health plan, and we also discussed the consultant's role in evaluating the best plans for the district. The topics consisted of the percentage of business the consultant has with other carriers, detailed discussion of the Amplify Program, clarification of the type of plan the district has, an HRA with union negotiated dollars that stay with the employee when they leave or retire, and prescription drug rebates. A next meeting date was not discussed, so we will need to circle back with all involved to decide on the next, if we can find Dave that works for everyone.
Excellent, thank.
That concludes my report.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Any other board appointments or school assignment reports?
Yep. So, Intermediate District 917 met on Tuesday, just this last Tuesday, August the 24th. We met at the Concord Building to do a room dedication in memory of Joe Lewis, so it's Joe Lewis Training Center is, was the dedication that evening. And the 917 is also requiring masks on all their buildings as well. And they are experiencing, like many businesses, and hiring challenges, and so are, so with some of the hiring challenges, they're experiencing a waitlist because they aren't able to be able to bring in and services many new students that would like to be served because they do not have enough staff. So, anybody looking? That concludes my report.
Okay. Any others?
The Burnsville Hall of Fame Committee met last week. I was not able to go to the meeting, unfortunately, but I did get an update that they are still planning the induction ceremony for Friday, October 8th, before the football game. The current plan is to ma, it is for the reception at approximately 4:15 at the high school. More information to come, and Jamie will be asking for a head count of any board members that are interested in, in attending. But I wanted to give you all the heads up that it is currently still being planned to be in-person.
Excellent.
More to come. That concludes my report.
I do know the, the board attended a nice learning session the other evening. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend due to a last-minute change in schedule, but I, sorry to put you out of the spot, anybody wanted to speak about that for a minute or two, or?
Yeah, we, so as part of our partnership with the Burnsville Leadership Group, which consists of chamber and city and schools, we are participating in an equity lab with the YMCA. And the board got together last Thursday night, and we spent a solid three hours, basically talking about, talking about equity, learning about ourselves, and also really invigorating, landing in a position of really trying to determine how to lead with equity as a board. And, you know, in what we discuss as a board, in our policies, in our, you know, relationships with each other, how do we help, you know, set the tone for equity across the district? So it was, it was an awesome, awesome gathering, and I, I really appreciated our time together.
All right. Additional reports, comments? Nope. Okay, seeing none, we will move now to the business meeting, portion of our meeting tonight, beginning with the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. I'll ask at this time if there's anything in the consent agenda that a board member wishes to remove for separate consideration. Seeing none, I will take a motion to, for the consent agenda tonight.
So moved.
I'll give that to Director Wurbe, and a second, where did I hear it?
A second.
Second, Director Hume.
I didn't hear a second voice.
Oh, I, I thought there was a concert I heard too on the, so, all right. So, we have a motion in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion for the consent agenda passes unanimously. We will now move to new business for tonight, beginning with the need to approve Student Activities Handbook. Contrary to the agenda, I understand Guillaume Peck, or Director of Athletics, is currently preoccupied, so we are humbled to be raised with the presence of Dave Helke, our principal from the high school.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Directors and Superintendent Battle. Yes, I am pinch hitting tonight for Guillaume and Jay. We all know the importance of participation in activities, whether it's athletics, whether it's fine arts, or the academic activities that we have, and whether they're activities that are, activities that we sponsor as a school, or whether they're student-led activities and activities that students come together with and, and create groups for. And so it's definitely important that we promote them, and that we do everything we can to make sure that our students have access to them. So, many years ago, the Activity Handbook was created, and that really came out of a desire to make sure that students and families in our community knew what we offered and what they might be able to participate in. And that has become an annual publication that is put out. And I have to say, just even this evening, I'm going down and catching a little volleyball, and then seeing the marching band, you know, practicing, the excitement and the kids, and just the sense of community that's built with all that goes on at a high school is pretty incredible. So, I am bringing forward the Activity and Athletic Handbook for approval for this coming school year. There really were no substantial changes in the book. It was just changing contact information, changing advisor, coach names and things like that. But beyond that, the remainder of the Activity Handbook remains the same as it, as it had last year.
Okay. The recommendation is to approve the 2021-2022 VHS Student Activity Handbook. A motion for the recommendation in front of us, please?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Seconded by Director Alt. I will open it up for any questions or discussion.
I just had one question. How is this distributed to the students?
So this is, it's, it's available digitally, so we do not make print copies of it. We do take time during the first day of school or the first couple of days of school, and explicitly make sure that all of our students are directed towards it. We, it's talked about a bit. The other thing that they've added last spring was when they met with eighth graders, they gave eighth graders an opportunity to complete a form that also they could express their interest in participation in an activity, so that our advisors or coaches could reach out to them. And I believe they plan on doing that again here at the beginning of the school year. So, it's, it's always available online for students and for our families, but then there's things that are done within a classroom or at the school that make sure that kids can, are aware of it. And then, I think more importantly is it's trying to make those connections then with, you know, if a student is thinking they're excited or interested in something, getting their name, and then having our coach or our advisor, or even sometimes captains or senior leaders of teams then reach out.
I, right, exactly. I have to remember to ask my soon-to-be ninth grader, because I remember him filling out, telling me that he filled out a form about his interests. But I do think we might have a little bit of a heavy lift ahead of us in terms of getting students re-involved in some activities. It seems like, at least some of the ones that I've seen anecdotally, it seems like participation is down since COVID. Certainly, marching band, when I saw them last night, is a lot smaller. They sounded great, but they're a lot smaller than they used to be. So I think whatever we can do to continue to promote all of the many wonderful activities that we have at the high school, I think is going to benefit those activities a great deal.
Yeah, certainly agreed. And I know that Jay Guillaume and I have had that conversation, that COVID, I think, has, you know, kind of decreased a little bit of that momentum, you know, with just not having the activities or just some of the, the barriers in place for students to participate. And so we, we've talked about how can we, you know, build up that momentum and, and kind of build those activities back up. So that's definitely on, on our radar.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I, I think it's made every year, and I think it's a fair one to make again this year, that there are so many activities and opportunities at the high school that are offered to students that, you know, there really is, I find, I would find it hard to believe that there wouldn't be at least one thing that each student could find to connect with, and to enrich themselves and others. And all the time and effort that goes into maintaining all those activities, you know, it's, we're very fortunate, and our students, students are very fortunate to have all of those, those offerings. So, thank you.
And I would just pass on a thank you to Guillaume Peck and Jay Lepre, because they definitely, they have a passion for this work, and they have definitely done a lot to support our coaches and our advisors in making these opportunities available.
Okay. Let's not see any more comments. We'll vote on the motion in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Not seeing any, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, thank you. All right. Next up under new businesses, to approve casual wage scale. Coming to the microphone to present, Stacy Solvine, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Chair Miller, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Each fall, we bring to you our casual wage scale for your approval. The casual wage scale are for those positions not identified under any terms and conditions of employment or bargaining agreements, and they are truly casual. These are your event, or daily, or sometimes seasonal types of activities, again, that aren't covered. We have a few changes this year on our casual wage scale, including raising the rate for our students to match the minimum wage with the law. Also, we are looking at our subrates for our non-licensed positions, increasing those to be competitive with our current market. Also, we are changing one of the terms for, instead of a educational assistant, as far as a sub, we are moving to a non-licensed supervisor, and with the support position. The reason that we're doing that is we're trying to be a little bit preemptive, as far as if we are going to need to start providing coverage in the classroom if a teacher is out for anything related to COVID. Instead of it being an EA, which EAs have certain contract language, we're paying a higher rate for somebody to, an adult, to actually supervise the classroom, possibly why the teacher teaches remotely, so that the classroom can continue. So this is kind of setting the stage going forward, and just being ready in case we do need to use that. Again, also, EAs are very difficult to find. It's one of our areas that we're still struggling with to start the school year with. So with that, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the following rates of pay for the 2021-2022 school year.
Well, I will take a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
Moved by Director Chester. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Connor. I will open it up for discussion. Questions? Seeing none, we will vote on the motion in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Now, we will move to the next item, again with Stacy Solvine, to approve board priorities.
The board priorities were identified, or are identified, in our collective bargaining agreement with the teacher union, to where each fall it was agreed upon by both parties, the union and the district, that we, as a board, not you as a board, I'm sorry, you as a board, could carve out priorities for the upcoming school year, not this one, the upcoming school year, in case we needed to make reductions based upon training, certification, certifications, additional licensing, or specific skill sets. And so the priorities that we're bringing to you at this point represent areas such as our pathways, our CTE programs, a number of different things where folks are, CIS programs, where folks are needing additional master's degree in their content area, as well as the, the different pieces. So I will read the recommendation. I'm not going to read through the table. That's just included in the proposal as a whole, as a subject matter here. So, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approves for the 2021-2022 school year, the proposed programming priorities and staffing retention protections, and their qualifying criteria in the following areas. And again, as they're listed on the table.
Thank you. I will look for a motion for the recommendation in front of us.
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt. Second, please.
Second.
Seconded by Director Wurbe. Any questions or comments about the motion? Nope. Nope, all right. Seeing none, I will, will take a vote on the recommendation in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Stacy. Having reached the end of our agreed-upon agenda for this evening, I will now declare us adjourned. The time is 7:36.
Do you take the motion?
Good, a motion, which, we do not need a motion.
We do not need a.
We're meeting to go on eternally.
If we, if we have a time or we reach into the agenda, we can, I can declare it unless, but you guys can quickly jump in and rule for order that you want to add something to the agenda and then we have to stay open.
I am good.
Who was closest?
I'll add another reminder.
We had Anna at 7:35, so.